Buenos, sen. Hufferty. The Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School Disability Services Self-Determination and Historic Preservation Housing Public Accountability and the Build-Up Public Hearing is called to order. It is currently 9:00 a.m., Friday, September 6, 2024. The committee will hear testimony today on the appointment of Mr. Gustavo A. Morales and Mr. Romeo, Romeo A. Angel to serve as members of Guam Housing Board of Directors and Abner Mariano P.E., R.C.D.D., A.P.B.D. plus C. to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council. Notice of this hearing was provided to all senators and stakeholders and the local media on August 30, 2024, and September 4, 2024, thus meaning the requirements of the open government law. In addition, the notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website. A recording of this hearing will be available on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel and website. Materials for this hearing were shared on the committee drive and are available for print upon request. For signing convenience, we have a QR code at the entry point. Joining me today, fortunately, it's just me. Sorry, take it back. Sido's mase for all of you guys' presence today and those attending live, we appreciate it. I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those in attendance, and the conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Individuals speaking shall only use respectful and professional language conduct. Personal interference about anyone's character or motive of any senator or any individual is not permitted. The chairperson or committee may order removal of the hearing or the committee or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of Liastern Guam and who fails to observe decorum according to the 37th Guam Legislature's standing rules. All must abide by these rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. Before speaking, please introduce yourself, state your name, job title, and organization, and make sure to turn on the mic. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. For the agenda today, we have the appointments of Mr. Romeo Angel to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors to serve a term of length of six years from the date of confirmation. Mr. Gustavo, as well, Mr. Morales to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors to serve a length of six terms, six years from the date of confirmation to fill the expired position of Mr. Tomas LG Flores. Also, Abner V. Mariano to serve as a member of the Guam Building Code Council to serve a term of five years from the date of confirmation. Those testifying will be allowed to present their written or oral testimony. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee and may be provided to staff for photocopying for members. Once you have provided the testimony, please remain in the room for questions if there may be any. We will now proceed with the testimony from the appointees. Just a reminder, before you begin, please state your name for the record so if we can have all the appointees come to the table, and then we'll start. We'll start with Mr. Gustavo Morales. Or Mr. Romeo, whoever wants to go first. Okay.
Amici. Good morning. Audible Roy A. Cronata, Chairman, the Committee of Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School Disability Services Self-Determination and Historic Preservation, Housing Public Accountability and Guam Build-Up. Members of the 37th Legislature Guam. One member. Dear Chairman and Senator Cronata and distinguished committee members. Half a day and good morning. I want to thank you all for the opportunity that you provided me to give my testimony this morning. So I have many things to be grateful for. This island gave me the two loves of my life, my beautiful wife Rose and my amazing daughter Yacita. The island has also given me an outstanding career and an amazing group of friends. I often joke with my friends on how I feel that I have become tomorrow. Now it's time to give back to the island that I love. When I met with Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio, I had shared with him that I was looking for a way to give back to the island that I call home since moving here in 2013. And now I can bring my leadership and knowledge to help make Guam better for the people. And after sharing my background with Lieutenant Governor Tenorio, we determined that Guam Housing Corporation could be a good fit for both myself and the agency. I have always had a passion for real estate all my adult life. I purchased my first property at the age of 18, right after joining the Air Force. I wanted to buy a new car, but my mother did not agree. She guided me towards the purchase of my first property, and I have been going since. I have gone through several real estate purchases and have a few rental properties. I believe that that knowledge and experience that I have, I have gained, will help me as a board member with the Guam Housing Corporation. I'm a retired Air Force veteran and served for a great nation for 21 years. After I retired, I started my second career with the Department of Defense as a civil servant, where I have served an additional 20 years. I currently work for the Defense Health Agency at Naval Hospital Guam as a Deputy Chief Information Officer. I am excited and ready to serve the Guam Housing Corporation so that I can bring my leadership and knowledge to help drive the mission of the agency so that it can empower the people of Guam with the pride of owning a piece of paradise we call Guam. In closing, I humbly ask that you will consider my nomination, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Thank you for your service to the nation and the island. I really appreciate your service. I don't have any questions for you. You've done your time, and we're gonna need your service for the board, I think. But if any of my colleagues do show up, I will definitely give them the opportunity to have some time with you, if that's okay.
Most definitely. Thank you.
We'll proceed to Mr. Romeo.
Good morning, Senator Roy Cronata. And half a day to everyone in this room. I would like to express my appreciation for my nomination as board member of the Guam Housing Corporation. Indeed, it is an honor and a privilege for me to be nominated to this position. For what being said, I am open to support the programs and services of the Guam Housing Corporation in the best of my ability with commitment and determination to serve and to be of service to others. Who am I? For those who don't know me, my name is Romeo Angeles Angel. Married to my lovely wife, Felicita's Angel is sitting behind me. A retired teacher and currently teaching at GOG as an adjunct instructor and currently a member of the Guam Education Board. I am a former employee of the Bank of Guam for 30 years and retired as vice president and have managed several branches of the bank, both on Guam and in the outer island, namely, the Naval Station Branch, the Adilu Branch, Dedido Branch, Opportumon Branch here on Guam. And off island, I serve as a branch manager in Quadeline Branch as well as the Maguro. My experience in leadership and service transformed me to a better person, to a better leader, and to be a loving husband to my wife. Being an employee of the Bank of Guam, I have served, I believe, in the best of my ability with dedication, loyalty. And for that reason, I have been awarded the President Excellence Award as an astounding employee of the year. In addition to that, through the Bank of Guam, I've been awarded in 2014, I believe, as SBA Small Business Champion of the Year. Now, in addition to the Bank of Guam experience that I had, I'm also involved in many community service programs. To name a few, the Lions Club International. First of all, I'd like to welcome Michael Lion member, Lion Roy Cronata. He's a member of the Lions Club International. In my 20 years of service as a lion, I have served as club president and district governor. As a club president, I have received a club excellence award in 2008 for excellent president service or leadership. And as a district governor in 2010, 2011, I also been awarded by the LSA International a district governor's excellence award. In addition, the two, for my dedication and service, I've also been awarded the Founders of Membership Growth Award by the Lions Club International. I am proud to be a lion because I have the opportunity to connect with many people, help many people, service many people, as well as my community. As being a lion, I learn a lot. I've earned experiences. I became more confident of myself to serve and to be service to others. Now, in addition to the lionism, I am so connected with the Filipino community of Guam or what they call the FCG. FCG has about 38 to 40 clubs under the banner of the Filipino community of Guam. I've been with them for almost over 10 years. Awarded as the Filipino award, I have what they call the Gawad Ulirang Pilipino for outstanding leadership in 2019, and also Gawad Ulirang Filipino Award in corporate economics and entrepreneurial leadership. I'm also proud to be a member of the FCG because I also have the opportunity to connect to many people on island and even around the globe. Now, I also serve as education services officer in Diego Garcia. It's about eight hours flight from the Philippines to there or from Diego to the Philippines. While Diego Garcia, well, when I was assigned at Diego Garcia, I had the roller coaster of emotions. Emotion of sadness because I will be sacrificing myself to be away from my family. On the other hand, also a sacrifice for my wife to be away from me or from our family. But it was an honor as well. It was an opportunity because, again, it's an opportunity for me to develop myself as a better individual, as a better leader, and as a better service person to the people in need and to the community. Because while in Diego Garcia, when I saw the need of camaraderie and togetherness in this island, I organized the Filipino-American, Mauritian-British, Bayanian community. As you know, Diego Garcia is a very isolated island. That's why most contract workers feel so sad, expressing loneliness in their life. And that's why I thought about doing something to make their lives joyful and not miserable while working in the island. To me, success is not measured by accumulation of materials. For example, gold-plated trophy, certificate of appreciation in a frame, maybe a loud clapping of hands from the audience that make the person float up in the sky with joy, or maybe by a cash award. To me, success is the number of service that you rendered to many people. Success is not measured by what you have learned, but it is measured by what you have taught to other people. Success is not also measured by what you get, but it is measured by what you gave. And also for me, success is not measured by what you did only, but it is measured by what you have done to many people to make their lives a big difference. So being a leader in the community, in my clubs, in the Lions and the FCG, I believe that walking a walk of unity coupled with teamwork will reach you to the hilt of success. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your service. Certainly, your resume is quite lengthy. Yeah, a lot of community civic work and a lot of philanthropic support for the community. Thank you to you and your wife. Your wife also was my teacher in middle school, and she very much was not telling us to join Lions Club, but telling us to join every club in the school. So I know you guys love serving the community. I remember her ever since middle school. So thank you, guys, again, for your support and service. Yes, sir.
And also, truthfully, Senator Roy, I have served as the board member of the Guam Housing Corporation way back in 2011 to 2016 for five years. You know, and I had also a very good opportunity to learn and to meet all these people who are open-hearted to serve the community as well. And I'm proud to be a member. I was proud to be a member of the board of the GRSE at that time for five years.
Yes, so welcome home. Yeah, I don't, I don't.
It's a homecoming for me, though.
Yes, it is. It is, very much. So I don't have any questions for you right now. We'll proceed to Mr. Abner, if you would like.
Good morning, Senator Roy Cronata. To those attending here in person and those live, I do apologize, I did not prepare a lengthy speech. This is actually my first time being in a public hearing. A little bit about myself. My name is Abner Mariano. I grew up in Guam. Moved here from the Philippines since I was four years old. Attended public schools and then had the chance and opportunity to study abroad in the United States. There, I decided to pursue a career as an electrical engineer. Studied for four years and came back to Guam to fulfill my commitment with my scholarship. Fortunately, coming back to Guam did teach me a lesson in that I grew fond of Guam again. I did realize that being from Guam is what made me who I am. It created something that I felt proud of. So I decided to stay here, brought my wife over. We have three kids, and Guam is considered our home. I have worked in my career for over 25 years. Immediately after I graduated, I did start my electrical engineering career here immediately. Worked my way up to being the principal of the firm that I currently work in. And there's been something lacking that I felt that I've been preaching to my kids, to those I mentor, which essentially was public service, giving back to the community, especially to the community that you grew up in and the community that made you who you are. So that is something that I've been trying to concentrate on more and be more involved. And I believe that being a member of the Guam Building Code Council is just a start of what I feel would eventually create a good public service in return, what I have been given from the community of Guam. I humbly ask to support the appointment to be a member of the Guam Building Code Council. I do firmly believe in the ideals of the council itself, of public safety, ensuring that the engineers, the construction industry does comply with the requirements, the codes, items that help ensure that the safety of the public is followed. Other than that, I don't really have anything much to say. I am here just to say that I do support and would love to be part of the Guam Building Code Council and hope that you would support that appointment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for accepting this appointment. Very much, your acronyms after your name are very much, you know, you bring a lot of experience, right? More than 25 years. I just wanted to clarify, you having any conflicts that may affect your board.
Board membership.
Membership.
So I am a principal for the firm I am. So when conflicts do exist or possible, I would excuse myself from that situation. It is actually not a situation that I have had experience on. It does happen quite often. I do have family members that are also engineers, both in the private sector as well as in the government sector, federal government. So when that arises, it is something that I do or am careful of and want to make sure that I do follow carefully.
Okay. Do you have any goals upon your appointment to this board that you'd like, short-term, long-term goals?
Well, one of the goals I do have in a code council is one of the intents is to make sure that the codes are up to date. That is, I think, a very important item. Codes do ensure public safety. At the same time, I do realize, being that I do work here, that codes may not apply or fully apply to what Guam is. So that is something that does need to be considered heavily. It is not just something you blanket exercise. So one of those that I would like to see is maybe in the future, possibly work with my colleagues and see what are the requirements that can be improved on. And we do have good codes. We do have good energy codes. But constant updates or reconsiderations would have to be looked at over the years just to ensure that we keep ourselves up to date with the industry.
Thank you so much. Certainly, as the oversight chair, I want to try to modernize our building codes and make sure that we're following, you know, national standards and ensure that people's safety is paramount. And whatever we can do to update the myriad of, you know, acronyms that you have behind your name, right? We want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to grow and also be responsible with development. LEED also is very important to me. Environmental conceptual designs are very, you know, our building is LEED certified, so it absorbs the water from the parking lot, uses in our gray water use, our solar panels on the roof. We also have these blinds that supposedly transition when the sun's on the right side. It moves, it starts to close. And so, you know, I'm very much appreciative of your experience. And again, your resume speaks for yourself. I think your character and your vault. I don't have any questions much for you. That's it, pretty much. I think your family very much supports you. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here today, right?
Yes, that's true.
So there will be some times that I think the board meetings will take a little bit more time. So I hope your family supports and understands that situation, okay? Thank you so much. Mr. Morales, I understand that you do have some business interests. Do you feel that any of your business interests would conflict you as a board of this appointment? Okay, can you just answer that on the mic?
Definitely not, sir.
Okay. I don't have much questions for you because also your resume speaks for yourself, volumes of character, right? So what would be some of your short-term and long-term goals as appointed to this board?
I'd like to get a good understanding of what the Guam Housing Corporation does. My understanding is they offer the opportunity for first-time homebuyers and anybody requiring housing for the first time on Guam. So I'd like to be involved with that a little more and try to help. I hear a lot of people have a really hard time on Guam getting a home, and I would like to help with that side of the business and see if we can support and help them get into a new home.
Okay, thank you so much. Look forward to hearing any updates from you. My office remains open to supporting your endeavors. I know your family is very much in support of you being appointed. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here either, right? So, you know, just to advise them again, the board appointment may take some time off of your family. But it's all in the good of the community, right?
Definitely. That's the whole point.
All of you guys have good community engagement, and you guys are very much good neighbors. So again, thank you so much for accepting this appointment. Mr. Romeo?
Yes, sir.
What, um, you don't have any business interests listed in your resume, but I just wanted to clarify for the record. Do you have any business interests?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much for that. Do you have any short-term and long-term goals? I know you have a long-term resume, but do you have any long-term goals for the board? Okay. I think we can all work together to improve the quality of life for all our people, right, and our community and continue to thrive together. So I, man, this is a fast hearing. But do I have anyone else in the audience that would like to testify for any of these individuals? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay? Oh, I thought it was just a... You may testify, ma'am. Ms. Angel, you may proceed if you'd like to testify. You want to testify for your husband? You may. Yes, you can. Oh, she's gonna do it for you? Okay, whenever you're ready, then.
Okay. Am I good? Buenas, Senator Cronata. My name is Edith Pangalina. I'm the president of Guam Housing Corporation. I'm here this morning to support our two board members that are here this morning to the board. I appear before you, of course, in support of their confirmation. Mr. Angel, as a former board member of the Guam Housing Corporation from 2011 to 2016, has an established familiarity with the agency and its operations. This experience will undeniably allow Mr. Angel to bring a historic perspective of where JAC has been and thoughts on the next steps for its future. Further, having retired from the position of vice president, branch manager with the Bank of Guam in 2021, after 29 years of service, Mr. Angel brings a wealth of knowledge in the banking and finance industry. This experience will no doubt allow Mr. Angel to share a unique perspective with respect to the mortgage and loan activities of our agency. Going along, Mr. Morales, after serving 21 years with the United States Air Force, retired from active duty and proceeded to hold positions within the federal government, which includes his current position as Deputy Chief Information Officer with the U.S. Naval Hospital on Guam. He also has firsthand experience with the rental market as the owner of a rental unit located in Deddo. I believe his experience as a supply systems specialist, systems administrator, and chief information officer with the federal government and as a small business owner on Guam will serve JAC well, particularly as we seek sources of funding to include federal grants for the development of JAC properties with the goal of increasing the inventory of badly needed affordable rental units and homes for purchase. I wish to thank both Mr. Angel and Mr. Morales for their willingness to step up to serve the people of Guam as members of the Board of Directors of the Guam Housing Corporation. And I wholeheartedly extend my support of their commitments. Thank you, Ms. Senator Cronata.
Thank you, Edith. Very much appreciate your testimony. Ms. Angel, you may proceed. Again, advise your name and your title.
Buenas, Jen. Happy day to our honorable Senator Roy Cronata. At magandang umaga po for all those of you who are here this morning to witness this event. Thank you so much, Senator Cronata, for giving me the opportunity to speak. At first, I was actually reluctant to afford Mr. Romeo Angel my testimony to vouch for his character and integrity.
my testimony to vouch for his character and integrity, pivot to his appointment as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. However, I came to a realization that if his friends are able to support him in this way, so must I, since I know him much better. Mahal, as I dearly call him, is not only a very affectionate husband of mine for fifty-two years by next month, but also a very loving father to our four children and their spouses, and a doting grandfather to our seven grandchildren as well. This is the home of his own family. When the whole family migrated here, he found himself working in a bank, his first home on this beautiful island of Guam. And as he widens his horizons through his benevolence, humanitarian, and religious services, he has erected different homes where people in our community and beyond grow and mature in service for others. These are the homes of the Couples Por Christ of Guam, Knights of Columbus, Extraordinary Ministers of the Eucharist, the Filipino Community Guam, and the Lions Clubs International, to name a few. So when he retired as a bank branch manager and vice president through the persuasion of his children and due to the unprecedented challenges brought about by the coronavirus pandemic, he left his home, the bank, for almost thirty years. He did it with a heavy heart because he loved his career. As he would always say, it is an opportunity to support people in their journey of navigating their financial resources. His retirement, though, did not stop him from assisting people, particularly his customers at the bank. Whenever they seek his assistance, he continues to help them in any way he can possibly do. Currently, he is preoccupied with building another home aside from sustaining and maintaining the other homes he has built already. This is the home for his flowering plants, fruit-bearing trees, and nutritious vegetables where he shared with my siblings and other friends when he has the time to harvest them. This is where he finds delight in nurturing them. With his appointment as a board member of the Guam Housing Corporation by the honorable Governor Lillian Guerrero, I have a humble request from you, Senator Roy, and the other members of the Guam Legislature, to please let him be part of this another house, the Guam Housing Corporation. And I am positive, with his myriad of experiences and skills in leadership, he will be a great team player. He will deliver as he is equipped with strategies to surmount leadership challenges in this new home. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Seduce maasi at maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat po. Would anyone else like to testify? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Okay, it is currently nine thirty-two AM, and this concludes today's public hearing for the board members. We are adjourned. Thank you. God bless.